Mr. Cabeas. What member, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin are with us tonight? Did anyone else come? Is this four of us? All right. So first of all, let's. Mr. Cabeas, if you could, could you waive the minutes of November 17th, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from November 17.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, take a roll call.
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Do you get Russell? I didn't hear him, that's all.
Can't hear you, Russell.
Is he muted?
Oh. Unmute now. No, can't hear you.
No.
You're getting there.
You can't hear?
I can hear you.
All right, we can hear you now.
Go ahead.
Yes, on the vote.
Thank you. We have a couple of changes in tonight's meeting. Case number ZBA 2057 wants to move to January 26th. Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number is 20-57. Attorney Edmund A. Elcock for the Ministry of Appeal on the building inspected refusing to revoke the occupancy permit issued to the American Legion post 95 of the premises number 500 Washington Street, Unit A. Make a motion to continue the hearing to January 12th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, roll call, vote, please.
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Further on to tonight's, ZBA 2071, Gene Curran. Could I have a motion to move that till January 12th, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number 20-71, Gene Curran for a variance special permit floodplain to raise the existing structure and construct a new structure with less than required front yard setback to maintain existing garage on the premises number 30 Elcock Road. Make a motion to continue the hearing to January 12th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, roll call, vote.
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Just so the people on the stand out there today, there's only four board members tonight. We usually have five. That means you can, you have to win all four votes tonight. You can't have any descending unless you're looking for a finding. And I don't believe there is one tonight. So I'm going to go case by case. If you want to hear them, you can stay in line. Let me know if you want to be heard. Case number 2052, 25 Cliff Street, Kevin Gillespie. Kevin, you want to be heard?
I don't mute him, hold on.
All right. We are here.
Kevin, there's only four members on the board tonight. So what I'd like to know is you'd have to have all four votes tonight. We usually have five members. It's up to you. You can hear it tonight or you can move it to another date.
I'm happy with tonight.
Tonight's good, okay? Case number 2057, that's already moved, 2067. 35 Ames Street, Dango Markoletti. Mr. Clardy, would you like to have that heard tonight? Or would you like another date?
Get unmute himself.
Get unmute yourself. The bottom. Fine, Mr. Clardy?
Yeah, I think we'll move it forward.
Okay. Very good, thank you. ZBA 2069, 2070, C Street. Steve DeRoche, are you?
He's muted.
Steve?
Unmute yourself. Steve.
Yeah, we'll move forward.
Okay. And that does it. Let's go back to, we have four members. If anyone else comes in, we'll, last ones move. Case number ZBA 2052.
What about the old business, Marty?
The old business.
Oh, oh, I don't have that here. Go ahead, give me a.
20-51 Bradford Street, James White.
James White? That was moved from last meeting because I wasn't there, all right.
Correct.
All right. What was the address?
123 Bradford Street to convert the attic space into additional living space.
All right. Mr. White?
We're here. We would love to.
You have four, four, four members. Do you want to go on tonight?
Yes, please, we'd love to be heard. Thank you.
Thanks. Madam Clerk, what do we have next?
And there's one more old business, 494 Southern Attory, Missouri LLC, which is Hassan. And I, I'm looking for him now. Hold on one moment.
What is he doing there?
He is converting an existing second floor space to a residential unit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's letting him in now, one moment.
All right.
Hassan, do you have a microphone?
If you don't, you ain't going to hear him.
Can he hear us, Hassan?
I think the last time he had a phone.
We're typing to him right now.
All right, we can get back to him. Why don't we start case number, we're going to go to the old business, 2051, James White. Mr. White, you have the floor. Tell us what you'd like to do.
My wife and I just moved into, excuse me, my wife and I just bought and moved into our new home in Quincy in August. And we literally just gave birth to our firstborn halfway through August on the 11th.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. We have two very big dogs. We are in a two bedroom right now. It's about 1,250 square foot in our unit. And above us, we have a lot of potential and part of the reason why we moved here for the better, you know, schools in the neighborhood and the yard and the, and the park and the parking. We are hoping to continue to grow our family. And my wife works from home 100% of the time. I work from home probably about at least 50% of the time, if not more. So we also need our office spaces. We need the bedrooms to continue to grow our family, which we've already talked about. So if we want to stay in Quincy, we really.
Want to stay together, you got to get in separate floors once in a while.
I mean, truth, truth, truth be told, we saw this place come on the market about three months before we put our offer in and ended up taking it. And we, we weren't ready at that point. We, we didn't get it. And then I just checked in with the real estate agent because I noticed online it had kind of a weird status. And she said, I'm about to put it back by Monday. And I, I told her, I promised her that, you know, with the room in the attic, we can make this work for the, the neighborhood. And, and we, we ended up getting it. And as long as we can do that, we can be here.
So what are you, what are you putting on the side? Are you putting like dormers on? What are you going to do?
So there are, yes. The first, the original plan was that we were considering dormers, but after talking more with the architects and the DC on it, we think that it would actually be more cost effective and we would get a lot more square footage if they put on new rafters and just raise the roof. So, and, and literally just put on an entire new floor upstairs because we're looking to add three bedrooms and two bathrooms upstairs.
So you have two bedrooms in now. It's going to be five, five bedrooms?
Five bedrooms, you know, at least one, if not two of those will likely be a home, home office, my wife and myself who work from. Her family also lives in Chicago and never.
They haven't met the baby yet, so they want to come visit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cabeas, any questions?
We don't have any at this time.
Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise, not just yet.
Mr. Chin, any questions?
No questions yet.
Okay, let's listen to the neighborhood. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project?
Just a reminder to use the virtual hand raise or star nine if you're calling in. John Rutherford. Here to go.
Johnny.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you don't need the Trump hat no more.
Nah, it isn't over till it's over.
It's over.
Okay, Donald.
Okay. Don't disrespect the president yet.
Hey, John, John, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths will help you, God?
I sure do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabeas.
John Rutherford, 62 Grenwell Road. I'm all for, for people maximizing their single family dwellings because it's really expensive with taxes in the city of Quincy and stuff. I would just like to know, because when you see something on the sheet, I noticed that when you put on the zoning sheet, one, one other thing I want to add to, I think maybe we should start the meetings at 5:40. They're consistent, not starting right at 5:30. So if you post it at 5:40, maybe we could do that. But anyway, that's just a little stupid thing there. But basically, I, I would like to know, you know, like how many square feet is the lot? Because they did say they were going to add three bedrooms. So just so we do.
They're going up straight, John. They're adding to the, they're keeping the same width of the house, same everything.
No, no, but I, I just want to get a general idea of just, you know, what, what, what the, what the lot size was and what the additional square.
Mr. Cabeas, you have that right there, don't you?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Chairman. Let me see what I have here. The, the square footage is 6,757 square feet.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. No, that's fine. That's a, that's a decent sized lot in Quincy. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this project and that's it. I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Is there anyone else like speaking favor? Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Anyone raising hand? Call a part of the hearing closed? Any correspondence?
DBD letter?
Yeah, could you read it into?
We have reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project and have no comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone, call a part of the hearing closed? Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone opposed or undecided? Please raise your hand.
No. Don't see any.
Second call? Third call? Call a part of the hearing closed? I see what they want to do. They want to make the most they can out of the house and it's a nice sized lot, so I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor.
I see that there's a parking space shot, but because of the location next to the park, it seems as though that there'd be plenty of room in there. So I'll be voting in favor.
Thanks. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-51, James White for a variance finding to convert the attic space into additional living space on the premises number 13 Bradford Street. Make a motion to grant the variance and the finding.
Second. Second.
Second. On the motion, could I have a, a vote, Madam Chair?
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you again, guys. Good luck to the others here.
Is 494 Southern Attory online yet?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. You have the floor. Explain what you want to do there in 494.
Hassan?
Hassan? You're online, I don't see you.
He's two windows down below, Mike.
Can you hear us?
Oh, there you are.
Phone number, what's the phone number that he's calling from apparently?
What's the phone number you're calling from? Because we can't see, we can't, we don't know.
We can see him, we can't hear him.
Try that.
You don't have a microphone there. He's gone.
He shut his door.
We'll get back to him. Further on tonight's, ZBA 2052.
Hello?
Kevin Gillespie?
Hassan's back.
Hassan's back, go ahead, put him on. Last chance. He will be at the end. You there?
Hassan?
Can you hear us?
Just have him, uh, move on.
Move along, Marty. He's having.
Let's go back to the first case. Tell him, tell him he's got an hour to fix his thing, I guess. Kevin Gillespie? For 25 Cliff Street, is he here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have the floor. Explain what you'd like to do.
All right. Really quite simple. We have a, a small pantry on the side of the house. We are looking to expand that just a little bit in order to give just a little more space in the pantry and add a half bath. We've got two teenagers in the house who, despite all of our best efforts, keep getting bigger. So we're just trying to give ourselves a little extra breathing room in the house to accommodate for that. There is an existing overhang of the roof where the pantry is now. We do not intend to go beyond that overhang. So we're not really changing the footprint of the house that much at all. We're just adding a couple of feet out in the width and a couple of feet on the, the length.
Just 3.8 feet or something, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Cabeas?
None, I, I have none.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? Putting small addition on the back. On the side there, side in the back. Anyone? Second call?
John Rutherford.
John Rutherford. Rutherford, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm hatless this time. John Rutherford, 62 Grenwell Road. I just looked up on the map, you know, but before I looked on, on the map, considering that's in like the West Street area where they developed like crazy over there, of course, I'm in favor of someone doing whatever they want to their single family house. So I'm in favor of this one and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Second call? Third call?
No.
Hearing closed, any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
Letter from the Department of Public Works with no comments.
No comments. Thank you. Call a part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Anybody? Third call? Call a part of the hearing closed. Make a motion, please, Mr. Cabeas.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-52, Kevin Gillespie, for a variance to construct a small addition on the premise number 25 Cliff Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second hit?
Second.
On the motion, favor? Vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Michael Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Sure.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on tonight's business. Dan and Margaret Coletti for variance to construct 35 Ames. They're going to, in addition to the porch footprint.
Hello, guys.
You have the floor.
I just spoke with my wife and I guess we're going to move it forward.
Hmm?
Going to move it forward.
Yeah. You have the floor. Explain what you want us to do.
I think they want to continue, is it?
Hold up. No, what he wants to do, he wants to build the, an addition off the side for his, his mother is very sick and he has her hair.
Yeah.
And what he wants to do is put a bedroom and a bathroom on the side so that this way they cannot get her upstairs for a shower and a bath, bathing or anything. And so they could, she'd be on the first floor with them. She lives up in Maine and, and she, they're bringing her back, New Hampshire, they're bringing her back here to live. She's very sick.
Could you, could you spin that a little bit in your computer so we can see who's talking, please?
Yeah.
There you go. And, and, oh, look who it is.
How are you, Marty?
Bernie, taking off, will you?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths will help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Bernie, so that's, it's only like 3.8 feet out, correct? And like 12 feet down?
That's correct, yes.
It's just a small addition on there and you're going to blow it out that three, four feet so you can make a little bedroom for it.
Right, a little bedroom and a bathroom so they can, they can bathe or anything.
Right. All right, thank you. Any questions?
I have none.
None.
No questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
I have a letter in.
John Rutherford.
And John.
John Rutherford, go ahead.
John, I'd remind you that you're still under oath.
Okay. John Rutherford, 62 Grenwell Road. Actually, I made a mistake on that last one because I actually looked up the address to this one and I noticed this one was in the West Street area. And that's why I was saying they deserve, so, you know, therefore the state consistent based on that address, certainly, I think you should let them develop in that area. So.
It's only going out 3.8 feet too.
Well, like I said, this is basically behind all that crazy stuff that has happened on West Street. So I feel bad for anyone that lives in that neighborhood and I think they should be able to do whatever they want with their properties. So I'm always going to speak in favor of the single family homeowner that wants to upgrade their single family home. So I'm in favor of this one and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor?
I have a letter in support.
All right, address?
It's from 16 Wood Cliff Road, Lee and Sharon Smith.
Okay, very good. Put that in the record. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Correspondence, Madam Clerk?
I have none.
None. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor. Anyone else, Mr. Cabeas?
I'll be voting in favor.
Chin, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, likewise.
I'm in favor.
Make a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-67, Daniel and Margaret Coletti for a variance to construct a small addition by extending the porch footprint on the premises number 35 Ames Street. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Marty Aitken?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Oh, boy, Charlie.
Oh, Charlie.
Keep it going, I love it. All right. Further on to tonight's business. ZBA 2069. It's C Street, right where Louis' is, their parking lot. Mr. DeRoche, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening, board members. Steve DeRoche, the Ponza Valley Survey, representing O'Connell Management, is proposing this project. The plans were basically all developed by the architect and everything. And then a small caveat in the zoning regulations was uncovered that says that if, if you're in a business B district, which we are, and you want to build something, you have to conform to the regulations, the front yard setback of a residence A district if you do a but such a district. It would require a 20-foot setback on the frontage. Right in the middle, looking at about a 15.7-foot setback. Try to push it back, it's going to just shorten up the backyard. Probably have to seek a variance on that also. This is around the long time before the board and a lot of back and forth, back and forth. Hopefully, this is the last shot we, we have to take.
Yeah. I know, I know this whole thing was about Louis' Cafe and keeping a restaurant in Housneck and trying to let people survive, I guess. And anyway, I, I, believe me, I know all about it. It's been years, it's been going on for years. But I like to see Louis' open, of course. Everyone down here would love to, and I know it's tough with people. Making it tough. But anyway, I know it's a, it's a 30, 30 by 30, 36, 38 house. It's not that big, single. And then you got the other half going on next. It's going on the other corner of the lot. I, you know, I, I think they did the best they could down there for, for, for the lot and for that space. And I know I'm going to let the counselor speak when you're done, Mr. DeRoche. Do you have anything else to add?
Oh, that's it, sir.
Counselor?
See David McCrady, any of us?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, it's been going on for a while. I think that the, the two lots and the two proposals are going to be substantially better for the neighborhood. At first, there was talk of four stories and condominiums and all kinds of things that would ruin that corner. And they've come around with a couple of nice designs. Back in March, I believe, before we all went out on COVID here, we had a very well attended meeting at Broad Meadows. They went over the houses and, and the setup. And I think that the, I think it was well received. And now we'll, we'll move forward and take care of that. And at the same time, we'll hope Louis' makes a comeback, which is always kind of connected with this, and take care of that with the big parking lot that's down there and take care of the parking. So I'm, I'm in support of this and I have been since they, they came up with this. It's something that won't be too monstrous in Housneck down at that corner. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for your time working this out. So we can keep Louis' in Housneck, that'd be great. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cabeas? Cabas?
I don't.
Mr. O'Brien?
The, the only thing you need is, is relief for the front?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
For that one.
No further question.
And it's, and it's, yeah. Mr. Chen?
No questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone like to speak in favor? Where's the Louis' people?
I don't see any hands.
I know.
Do they know about the Star Nine?
Star Nine, raise your hand.
Anyone? First call? Second call? Son's trying to get his mic going. Call-up party hearing closed. Any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
Darlene Lugel. Darlene?
Hold on one second, Marty, please.
He just muted him. Is there anyone that's speaking on this project?
Uh, hi, it's Darlene Lugel Carter. I live in the neck and I just, I just want to say that I am in support of this. And I also hope that Louis' comes back as well. We miss it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, for hanging in and for meeting to speak. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If you're calling in, it's Star Nine to raise your hand to speak.
Second call? Third call? Call-up party hearing closed. Uh, no correspondence?
No.
No.
Not on this one.
Is there anyone that's opposed or undecided would like to speak? Anyone have anything to say?
Star Nine is only if you're calling in on an actual phone. Otherwise, use the virtual hand raise in the participant list. Or turn your screen on and wait.
Hey, I'm here.
There's nothing, Marty.
Okay. Second call, third call. Call-up party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor also.
I'll join the club.
I'll join the club.
Take it four, I'm in favor.
Feel the love.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman. In CBA matter 20-69, 1269 C Street LLC, for a variance to construct a single-family home on the vacant lot in the premises number 1266, make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, Madam Clerk, if we could have a voice vote.
Marty Akins?
Yes.
Michael Cabas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, further on to tonight's business. We have 2070. The same lot, the other half of it. Steve DeRouche.
Thank you very much again, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a, just basically similar to the last piece we just heard. Except this one has two frontage problems, one on C Street, one on Baby Lab, over 25 feet. The frontage is a little over 15 feet and the frontage is about 16 feet, 16 without feet. The, this lot here is Lot Two and it's a two-family house as opposed to the single-family on Lot One.
Mm-hmm. Alright, we, uh. Now, you got two decks over there and you got a driveway at 169 or something?
Correct.
165. Is that going under the deck?
This, they was parking under for the, on both sides.
Okay, now, I'm just thinking, 17 feet, that's, that's pretty close. For a car, correct?
Well, the driveway for the, for the garage.
They got a garage on the right side, I didn't even.
On both sides, yeah.
Because we said first it was gonna be parking under, so that's the second, second?
This is the second one, yeah.
Second spot, alright. Second spot, because I know originally that's what we talked about, parking under. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
I have no questions.
Ah, no questions.
No questions.
And they, they're coming up Baby Lab, so. Not like they're repeating, there's only gonna be one driveway going in the yellow, I'm correct? Yeah. Alright. Uh, anyone want to speak in favor? Son, pull it back so they can read it. Anyway. Counselor, you want to speak on this? Is my copy?
The son's son said.
Thank you.
I just.
I'm unmuted, ah, sorry. I, yeah, Marty, the same, same comments as the last one. Both quality houses and with the garages underneath, you know, maximizing the space down there and not really bothering any on-street parking. Uh, so, I think it's a good fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? First call? Second call?
First call.
Anybody?
You know, I'll present, if I have to, I'll present.
Anyone else? Third call? Call-up party hearing closed. Madam Clerk, do you have any correspondence?
Yes, I have DPW comments.
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, one moment, please. Confirm the imperviousy area will not be increased due to the development. Provide a clean-out for the sewer service. Upon completion of this project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks need to be submitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed or undecided or like to speak?
Bill Zanzau?
Opposed or undecided?
Alright. Bill Zanzau?
Hello? Someone speaking?
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not a Zoom pro and Chairman Akins up. Please note, I didn't get up in time to comment negatively about the related property. And I can't remember which one we're on now, either 1260 or 1266.
1270.
No, no, no.
2070, we're talking, oh, oh, 12, 1269, they're both, they're both like the same address right now.
Right, I entered.
It's case seven. It's a two-family.
Right, my complaint is on this, the requests on both variances are that at the end of the day, this is a hardship variance request. My understanding is a hardship variance cannot create a hardship. The parcels of 1260 and 66 have been required for parking for Louis' forever.
Right.
It's my understanding that this condition is still in place.
No.
Reality. When was that deleted?
That was deleted back two years ago and then again, a year later. Because it went back, it went, it went, it lost, then it came back. And it got approved. And then a year later, it went back and then back. So it's been here like three times. We've been dealing with.
The, the problem we're still looking at, Marty, is the restaurant.
Yep.
Counselor, the, the word counselor noted, well, you know, we'll have parking when the Marine Center's done and everything else. The problem is gonna be, that neighborhood is strapped for parking. And what parking is gonna be created at the Marine Center is not general public parking. It's supposed to be for the Marine unit. The activities at the launch. And additionally, the uses of the launch will be well-utilized, probably prime time for the restaurant.
Three times a year, three months a year, right.
Well, not just that, other times. I mean, technically, right now, the parking at the Marine Landing is supposed to be dedicated for, like, technically, it's not for public parking, year-round. It's not a nine-month proposition open to the public. It is open to the public, but that's not what the reg, that's not what the policy and the rules are as regards being MDC property and all that sort of thing. And the question then becomes, when the restaurant comes back online, if it does, we have a problem that, do they have sufficient parking? And you're putting the cart behind, in front of the horse, by approving these two properties to be developed and then the restaurant comes back and it has no parking and there's no clear parking capacity for it to be able to get permitted to go in there. And we're back to the same problems. We've got another neighborhood such as Wallaston Center and elsewhere where we've got court cases, denials, and all sorts of problems because parking is not there. And you're trying, this is trying to backdoor Louis' to be able to operate even though they've given up their parking.
Well, I think what they're doing is they're giving the same rights to them that they gave all the people in Wallaston, that within 300 feet, there's parking. And there's parking within 300 feet there.
I believe Dave McCrady.
Mr. McCrady, Mr. McCrady was the one that he, he's making sure that all that property got bought. All those parking spaces are gonna be there. The Marine unit is gonna be smaller than what was original. So there's gonna be more parking. He's gonna try to move that up front so that, so there'll be more parking. You won't be messing the parking up by moving the building in the middle. They're trying to bring that up front. So I think nine months out of the year down there, there's always parking in that lot, always. At night, there's always parking in that lot, even in the summertime. That isn't full. With what's in.
The problem, the problem still is, that parking is not yet, is also not, not only is it not supposed to be public parking, that parking is non-existent at this point. The Marine unit is still, the, the construction is still ongoing. It's gonna continue for a period of time. The neighborhood is torn up. There is no, so the parking is not readily available. And again, from my understanding, when you approve a restaurant, there, there has to be parking available, there has to be counts.
Within 300. That's what Fensmore is all about.
But you also have to count it up.
Count it up. Count it up. There's plenty of parking down in Fensmore for Louis'. People want to walk, they walk. A lot of people walk to Louis' that, that, that go to Louis'. Lots of people in House Neck.
That's a different proposition. People also park.
That's right. That's why you got Fensmore. It's okay, but it's, yeah, Counselor, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, no, Mrs. Zanzau is pretty much totally incorrect. I don't know. He hasn't been paying attention to Louis' these past couple of years. Not only will that lot be striped if Louis' comes back immediately, it's gonna be striped in the springtime. Now, that's gonna be no Maritime Center there in the springtime. We're gonna re-stripe that lot and start to reconfigure that lot over there so that we can use it for both regular cars and trailers. If anybody knows anything about the lot down there, and I know you do, Mr. Chairman, and probably a few others that are on the phone and live in the neighborhood, it's never been utilized correctly. It's been painted for trailers and probably 30 to 40% of the lot has never been used correctly. When we looked at it and I had engineers look at it along with myself, we end up between 50 and 60 spots at the end of the day. We also have down at Fensmere, 25 spots down there if folks need to park down there. You know, down in the public spots that are down near Brill Field. So there's more than adequate parking. The reason that the lot doesn't work, it's not configured correctly. And when it's all said and done, that Maritime Center is gonna sit up on the High Point, out of the flood zone, and those houses are gonna be gone. And we're gonna pick up more than adequate parking for Louis', for the Yacht Club, and for anybody else who wants to park in that lot. It's not gonna be a lot where it's, you know, Maritime parking only, you'll be told. It's gonna be a parking lot and the businesses that are down there are the Yacht Club, the Maritime Center, and Louis'. Now, you might have a couple of other small businesses that might want to use it, so be it. But we're gonna start enforcing rules in that lot. Lieutenant Gillan and I have talked a lot about the trailers that get left there, the boats that get abandoned, cars that get abandoned, and it's gonna be a different story down there. It's just not gonna be a dumping ground. So to say there's no parking, that we're gonna have this problem, we're not. We're actually gonna do our homework and stripe that correctly. And for seven months down there a year, it's just Louis' all by itself. Louis' had 24 spots and at times probably had an average of probably maybe 10 to 12 cars, 15 cars in that lot. So if they need to utilize this municipal lot that is gonna be eventually 100% under the city's control, and we've always been working that way, we're not gonna have any problem at all down there. It's actually gonna come out very great for the Yacht Club, Louis', the Maritime Center, and any other event down there at the rink that they use for roller skating, for hockey, et cetera, any events at Brill Field. So I'm more than confident because I've beaten this to death over the last couple of years that I haven't missed anything down there and that if Louis' comes back, we should be all set. Thank you.
Dave, with all due respect, this matter has gone back and forth. It's hard to keep track of, and I'll admit that. But the problem that you're talking about for the parking, there is a plan in place. The problem is, when is the plan gonna be done? And what you're doing is that you're proposing to approve variances that allow this to happen before the parking is even done.
Parking will be done. Parking will be done, Bill, in the springtime. In the springtime. It's gonna take the Galligans, if, at Louis', if they can do it, it's gonna take them a few months to get going and we're gonna make sure we have that parking lot ready to take care of that phase of, I guess, the project down the entire neck. And as the houses go away and the Maritime Center starts to get placed, we're gonna continue striping the lot. Louis' or no Louis', if Louis' doesn't make it, we're still gonna stripe the lot. So it's still gonna get redone. I'm hoping, like everybody on this call, that Louis' comes back. I grew up down there. I know exactly what they're talking about with Louis'. And we're gonna do this parking lot in the springtime, regardless of Louis' or no Louis'. And Louis' hopefully will be the first one to use the parking lot the correct way. Maritime Center and Yacht Club, and then everybody's happy at the end of the neck.
So Dave, are you guaranteeing that the lot will be done in the spring and it will not be impacted going forward by the remaining construction? Because we know the Maritime Center's gonna take a couple of years to wrap up.
Yeah, we're gonna, I just said, Bill, we're gonna stripe the parking lot in the springtime.
No, I said something different, Dave. Are you saying that the, the parking will be done, it will be available, and it will not be impacted going forward by the work that we know is gonna follow?
No, if, if, if they do some work down at the Maritime Center, you might lose a few spots, but you're gonna pick up 30 or 40, 50 spots right off the bat before we finalize the thing, Bill. If some of the spots are gone because they're gonna construct the Maritime Center, there's still gonna be plenty parking down here for Louis' and for the trailers. There might not be as many for cars until we're all done. But like I said, seven months of the year, you hear crickets down the end of the neck. When the boats go in the water at the end of May, till the end of September, it gets active. So we've got some time to do some planning in regards to maritime schedules and all that fun stuff. But that parking lot's gonna be re-stripe regardless of Louis' or no Louis' in the springtime. And then we're gonna move on. I guess that's all I, that's all I can do.
So again, my point is that you're approving this, the cart, ahead of the horse, which was the parking lot, which is coming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call?
Susan Boyd?
Susan Boyd?
Hi, a quick question. Would you say you're going to stripe the parking lot? Does that mean, is there, does the city have any intention of putting up meters or residential permit parking? Like, what's the plan as far as that's concerned?
Well, there'll be no meters. I know we're not going that far back. I'd get thrown out of there real quick. Lieutenant Gillan and myself are gonna talk, along with the mayor and the administration, about enforcing rules down there in regards to dumping things, but there won't be any resident parking or anything like that in that lot. That'll be almost treated, we get to the point, as a municipal lot, like, you know, a regular municipal lot. You know, where you'll, you know, be able to park a reasonable amount of time.
We put, a lot of overflow goes over there and sometimes people leave their cars there for more, for 24 hours. Residents will do that. Is that still going to be allowed?
No. We're gonna start looking at some of the cars that are dumped in there and we're gonna have the residents that are dumping their cars in there, they're gonna have to go on their property, wherever that is.
Okay. One other question. Sometimes in the winter, it takes several days for the lot to be plowed as well. Will that be taken care of this winter or should we count on that in the spring?
Um, I don't know yet. I, you know, we'll try to probably get through the winter and like we usually do. I'm not exactly on the plow schedule of that lot. Um, I know that if Louis' opens up, I know it's gonna take them a little time, so I don't know if they'll get going in the next couple of months. But we'll, we'll look at that, Susan. If we have to, we will. I mean, we're gonna take it all over, so eventually, you know, Quincy will be taking care of that whole lot. You know, maybe, you know, I can get back to you on that, on, on, on plowing it, but if it needs to get done, it's not that big of a deal.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided, second call? Third call? Call-up party hearing closed. And I know what Bill's talking about and I get it, people wondering what's gonna happen, what's gonna be this, what's gonna be that. You know, at first, I wasn't, I wasn't thrilled at all about that because I put that in effect all in one. But as it went on, it was, it was gonna lose a business and, and merely, it's the only place we have down here now. Everything else is gone, so. Uh, I hope they get that rest going very soon. So. Uh, I'll be voting in favor. Have a motion, please. Comments, Mr. Cabas?
No, I, believe me, I have none.
Mr. O'Brien?
No, I think it's all said.
Mr. Chen?
I'm gonna be voting in favor.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, in matter number 20-70, 129, I'm sorry, 1269 C Street LLC, for a variance to construct a two-family home on a vacant lot premises numbered.
LLC for a variance to construct a two-family home on a vacant lot, premises numbered twelve sixty-six C Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
May I? Marty Akins?
Yes.
Michael Cabas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Board. Uh, Marty, can I ask Narien one question?
Sure.
Narien, could you forward me on a copy of the, uh, comments from the DPW, please?
Yes.
I never saw them. We'll take care of that.
And, uh.
May I? Steve?
We need, we need Hassan. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
Ms. Carin from Elkhart Road is looking for Miss, Mr. DeRoche's phone number. She's trying.
All right, you can text it to Steve, right? Uh, is, we gotta, we gotta go back and, and, and. Hassan, do you have a phone number? Are you up?
Yes, I'm up and running now.
Hey, he's up and running. Hey, I saw you calling a tech guy, huh?
I saw.
Calling the tech, calling the kid.
I know.
Okay. Uh, one ninety-four, Southern Arby, you have the floor. Explain what you wanna do with that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. You know, as I explained the last time, I was only asking if I could convert the space upstairs for a two-bedroom and a bath, you know, as an apartment. I would appreciate it very much.
What's the square footage up there?
It's the same thing, like, the garage is twelve fifty, one, two, five, zero.
Twelve fifty, okay. Uh, so you're putting in exactly what's going up there?
Yes, I have exactly what I have at, uh, uh, at the garage, is what I will be having upstairs, and the plumbing and the electrical, we are already up there from initially when I built the garage.
Explain to us what exactly is going up there. Two bedrooms, a bath, what else?
Two bedroom, a bath, and a kitchen.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I don't have any questions. Cabas?
Questions? No, I have no questions.
No, no questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Counselor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for anybody to go to that effort to get the tech support, I'm gonna have the support. I don't even, you know, I don't even care what he's doing, but he's got my support. No. It sounds like a good project, Hassan, and you're finally gonna utilize some space that you haven't utilized at all, so good for you and, uh, good luck.
Sir McCarty, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor?
John Rota.
John?
Can you say, I mean, Cat Rasta or both in favor of this? Hassan's a great guy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John.
Is that a cat or a dog?
This is my cat, Rasta.
Oh, wow. Yeah, big dude. Looks like a commercial cat. Looks like that funny commercial cat.
It is, it is. So, I mean, Rasta's in favor. She loves dense development.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call that pilot hearing closed. Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
A letter from the DPW with no comment.
Okay. No comment. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Anyone? Second call? Third call? Close. I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I will also be voting in favor.
Me too. And Mr. Schuman is an upstanding citizen and a very good businessman. I am very much in favor.
Could we have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas?